Six o'clock and I'd like to call the April seventh, two thousand twenty-five Board of County Commissioners meeting to order. Recognize we do have a quorum. Vice Chairman Thomas, will you lead us in our invocation?
Will. Will you please join me as a lead us in prayer? Our most kind and dear heavenly Father, we come to you tonight grateful for this beautiful day that you've given us, God. We want to thank you for the rain that you've given us. God, we want to ask you just to be with all of us, be with us as a board as we make decisions going forward with this county. Lord, we want to ask you to be with all of our first responders, our fire EMS, our sheriff, our police. Be with those that answer the call in the middle of the night just to come out and make sure we're okay and to watch over us and to take care of us when we need them. God, we thank you for them. We thank you for those that sacrificed that time. God, we ask you just to watch over our soldiers that are watching over us and just be with them as only you can, God. And we thank you for giving your son to die on the cross so we may have eternal life. And we ask you just to go with us, lead us, guide us, keep us safe. In your heavenly name I do pray. Amen.
And Commissioner Royster will lead us in our pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Members of the board, you have the agenda before you. I would like to add a topic, Timberlake Fire Department, before our public hearing on five A. Any other adjustments to the agenda? Haven't hearing none?
I'm sorry, did we need to remove a closed session?
Yes, closed session number one. We can remove that.
All right, you heard the county manager that we will be removing closed session number one. Any other discussion from the board? Haven't hearing none? Do we have a motion to approve? We have a motion to approve. Any further discussion? Haven't hearing none? All in favor, vote by saying aye. Aye. Any oppose? The ayes have it. The motion's approved. At this time, we will ask Chief Fletcher to come before us.
Good evening, commissioners.
Good evening.
I just want to first start off and thank you all for having us out tonight. Recognize us for our ISO improvement lowering. Just got a few things I want to say. If you got any questions, I'll be more than happy to answer them. So what is ISO? ISO, for the folks that don't know, it's Insurance Service Office, what it stands for. It's a fire score rating that determines how well fire departments can protect their community and homes. Insurance companies use the score to help set home insurance rates. So the lower the grade, the less insurance hopefully you'll have to pay. And that is, of course, our goal, has been our goal for a long time. Back in January, we had our inspection. It's every five years that the state comes in and inspects us. We were a ISO class four slash nine, and I'll explain that in just a little bit. We got our results back just a few weeks ago and we were able to drop our grade to a three, which was very surprising when we got the results. We were very happy with the four, but we always look to improve anywhere we can. And by dropping that, hopefully our citizens will see some of the savings on that. So the ISO is basically from a one to a 10, with one being the best grade you could possibly get. One typically you'll see in like your bigger cities, Charlotte, Raleigh, Cary, Greensboro, places like that. And then of course, you know, it goes up. Again, we scored a three. We actually got a seventy-four, so we were right in the middle of a three. I was telling somebody the other day, we're actually about five points away from obtaining the two, and that's almost unheard of. So, so I do have that on my radar for the next five years. So what all do they look at when they come in grade? They look at, they look at several different things, one of them being needed fire flows, which they look at all your big buildings and big occupancies in your district, and they do a calculation on how much water would it take in the event of a fire. That's one thing. Emergency communications. They grade us on emergency, our emergency reporting, telecommunicators in our county here, the nine-one-one center, and the way they dispatch calls. And they've done a phenomenal job for us on that as well. Fire department, that is, of course, what we're being graded on us. That includes staffing, which we haven't improved on. Equipment. They also look at your training. Training is a big thing, and that's something that we always try to improve on, is training, along with your operations and community risk. So going out and doing fire prevention and educating the community. Water supply, they look at the water system as a whole, with Timberlake having hydrants in our district. It actually comes out of the city of Roxburgh. They grade the city of Roxburgh's water department, along with how we test our hydrants, which we do every year. So all of that, and then last, community risk reduction. That also, they grade the fire marshal and our investigators that we have with the city of Roxburgh that does our investigations on all our fires. They look at their training, they look at all of that stuff. So it's a lot of stuff that they look at to come up with a grade. Just some statistics, there are over, there were over fifteen hundred fire districts in North Carolina that have been graded. Out of those, one hundred and eighty-nine of the over fifteen hundred have a class three rating, and we're in that, one of those of one eighty-nine. So that's definitely something to be proud of. Nationwide, there's only six point seven percent of fire districts that have a class three rating. So I am very tickled, very proud of my folks, our members, our board members, our family members, all of our mutual aid departments that we work with. It takes all of us to make it work. And again, I want to thank you all, the county, county manager's office, county commissioners. Again, it takes all of us to make this work, and at the end of the day, we are here for our citizens. So if anybody, I've had a couple people reach out with like a proof of how they can send to their insurance company. They could reach out to us at Timberlake Fire Department, and we have a piece of paper they can send to their insurance company showing our class rating. So be more than happy to give that to them, so.
So that's already in effect?
It goes into effect July one of this year. So we got the grade a few weeks ago and it goes into effect July one. Yes, ma'am?
Congratulations.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Any other comments?
I for one want to thank you for a fine job that you've been doing with your, the fire department, and that was the plan all along, to get those ISO rates down. Job well done, and you and your department are to be commended.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
No, top notch.
Thank y'all. Thank y'all very much.
Thank you. Next, we have a public hearing. Addition of Smith Taylor Trail to be added to the database of roadway names for E nine-one dispatching Sally Vaughn.
Good evening, commissioners. Last we spoke, I introduced the concept of road naming in this county, and it can happen one of two ways, one, on a subdivision plat, or the second way by bringing it to this board for an approval. So this is the second way.
Miss Vaughn, let me go ahead and enter into the public hearing.
I'm sorry. I'm so excited about this. I just got to get it going.
Do we have a motion to go into a public hearing? All right, motion. Any further discussion? Haven't hearing none? All in favor, vote by saying aye. Aye. Any oppose? The ayes have it. Motion's approved. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. So this is our second way of doing a road naming. The name did not appear on a subdivision plat, so we're bringing it to you at this time. There are actually two new proposed homes down this private driveway, which already services to existing homes. The driveway does cross a piece of property which does not have a home on it, excuse me, a home on it for a total of five pieces of land. We did send certified and non-certified mail to the owners of all five pieces of land and only received two back. The, one of these properties is owned by a bank. We did let the renters know that this was occurring. The owner of another property was, did call me and ask questions, but never returned the letters. The owner of the fifth property is one of those people that chooses to not be reached. Their address in another county is an invalid address. I found a second address for them in that county, which was also an invalid address. Therefore, the two individuals who, two property owners who did respond have unanimously chosen the name Smith Taylor Trail as the option for their road name, and the ordinance is written as such so that we can proceed with that name at this time. So my request of you all tonight is to approve the recommended roadway name.
Any questions for the presenter? Madam Clerk, do we have anyone to speak in favor or against?
No, sir, we do not.
Members of the board, do we have a motion to close the public hearing? We have a motion to close the public hearing. Any further discussion? Haven't hearing none? All in favor, vote by saying aye. Any oppose? The ayes have it. Motion's approved. What is the desire of the board?
Move for approval.
All right, we have a motion for approval. Any discussion? Haven't hearing none? All in favor, vote by saying aye. Aye. Any oppose? The ayes have it. The motion's approved. Thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, we have our informal comment period. Madam Clerk, do we have any speakers to sign up?
Mr. Chairman, yes, sir. We have four individuals.
We have four individuals. This is a ten-minute period. Given that we have four speakers, three minutes apiece would be fine.
Yes, sir.
And just want to remind the speakers to be respectful of your time and also address the board as a whole, not individual commissioners. Madam Clerk, will you call the first speaker, please?
Yes, sir. Benita Purcell. And can I please instruct IT to set the timer for three minutes for the first speaker?
Okay, thank you. And I'll be very quick. I am holding a town hall meeting this Thursday at City Hall focusing on mental health, intellectual disabilities, and substance use. And I know several county commissioners have attended in the past, and I really believe that this will be a beneficial town hall for you all to attend. As you all run Person Industries, being aware of all the Medicaid billing cuts, shortfalls, I think being up to date on the most current information will be very helpful. I will have someone there from DHHS Medicaid speaking. So I just really wanted to come and invite you all tonight. I have flyers and I'll just give you to pass out. But if you have any questions, I'll be happy to.
What time?
It's at ten AM until noon.
Ten AM this?
This Thursday. The CEO from Via Health, who is the MCO that we get all of our Medicaid monies from, will be there speaking as well. So thank you.
Thank you for letting us know.
The next speaker we have is Kim Wooton.
Thank you. Can I start?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. Well, I'm Kim Wooton. I live here in Person County. I moved here nine years ago. And when I moved here, I was kind of looking for a swimming pool, public pool, and found out there wasn't one. And so off and on over the years, I've thought about it, I've asked around, and then I had this accident with my knee. And I could really have benefited from some water therapy. It's non-weight bearing, and I would have healed a lot faster. My surgery was January ninth. And I started thinking really hard again about, you know, what could benefit Person County with the swimming pool? Seniors like me could really benefit, but I kind of wanted to ask the county commissioners maybe to reconsider. I've asked around a little bit and I've heard that there was a tax that was passed or there was some money that was available for a public pool, and don't know what's happened to that over the years. But I wanted to also just talk a little bit about me. And when I was a little girl, we didn't have a swimming pool, public swimming pool in my town, until I was about 10 years old. And then they got a public pool, and we all went there. Families went there, kids went there. People learned how to swim. You don't have to worry about them drowning in a lake or drowning, you know, in the ocean or something. They learned how to swim, and it was good for the public. It was good for families especially, and also good for seniors like me. So I wanted just to ask the commissioners if maybe you wouldn't, maybe set up a committee to investigate having a public pool in Person County again, and I'd love to be part of that discussion if possible or, you know, whatever would be your pleasure. I just appreciate the time tonight to come and ask you to consider putting in a public pool. It'd be great. I think it'd be great for the county. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Okay, oops. Sorry, it's just, I'm, it's still a little bit awkward.
Next speaker we have is Anita Charnaker.
I didn't sign up for anything. Actually, I'm here to observe mostly. How do you do? My name is Anita Charnaker. I'm not originally from here, but I've lived here almost twenty-five years. I agree. I believe that this county needs a pool. It needs some kind of social structure for the children to go to, to have, to be with their friends, to get exercise, to keep the families together. I understand that there has been at least twice, maybe more, of the money that was available and sent back to the state or federal. It needs to be used here. It's the county's money. And there's a perfect place right at the Parks and Rec, between the basketball court and where their offices are, that whole area. And the seniors could use it. I go to the senior center and use the gym. We could all use it there for our health and safety, considering that there's going to be somebody there. There's going to be jobs there. There will be everything this county could use. And since the population is exploding pretty much with all the new developments, it's probably going to be really good for all the new people who come also. So I thank you, and just remember those who have also are disabled could use a pool to lots of exercise. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker we had is Sam Elias.
Commissioners? Good evening. My name is Sam, and I'm the community organizer for Person County with Down Home, North Carolina. We're a nonpartisan organization that works in rural communities to make sure housing, education, healthcare, economic opportunity, and access to clean air and water are a guarantee, not luck. I'll go ahead and share that I'm not from Person County. I live in North Durham, but I mainly just sleep there. I'm thirty-three years old, and I've only lived in Durham for about three years. The rest of my life has been spent in rural towns. And I know you don't care about where I'm from. I know you care about the people of Person County, and that's where I'm going to keep the attention and focus. In the two years that I've been organizing here, I've knocked hundreds of doors and I've had hundreds of conversations with folks across the county. One thing I hear again and again is there isn't anything for people to do. And when I ask what would make things better, a pool is always in the top five. Over time, I've also come to understand the deeper story, how we've had funding to build a public pool not once, but twice, and that money has been sent back. When I bring up the private pool options that we do have in the community with people that I talk to, people often tell me that they're not accessible, not affordable, and not something people feel comfortable attending and going to. Person County deserves a public pool where kids can learn to swim, teens can have a summer job, our elders can have a space to exercise, and can all have a place to cool off in the summer. A public pool isn't a luxury. It's an investment in the people of Person County, in their health, their safety, and their future. I'm here tonight asking for the county to prioritize funding for a public pool. There is currently a federal grant opportunity called the Thriving Communities Grant, offering seventy-five to three hundred and fifty thousand dollars for projects like a public pool. The application is seven pages long. The first deadline is coming up April thirtieth, and then a second deadline in July. We are happy to share any information about this grant and also happy to give any information on how this money can benefit Person County. I thank you all for your time and your commitment to this community. I also have petitions if anyone wants to come and sign and talk to me. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, that concludes our informal comment period.
All right, thank you. Next item on the agenda is discuss an adjustment or approval of the consent agenda. Are any adjustments needed at this time? Haven't hearing none? Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda? We have a motion. Any further discussion? Haven't hearing none? All in favor, vote by saying aye. Aye. Any oppose? The ayes have it. The consent agenda is approved. Under new business, we have Person County State of the County Health Report, two thousand twenty-four, Janet Clayton and Richard Johnson.
Good evening, commissioners. Tonight, I would like to introduce you to Dr. Richard Johnson. He is part of our health education team, and he will be presenting our State of the County Health Report.
Good afternoon, commissioners.
Good afternoon.
I'm absolutely thrilled to be, my first time being before the board. And tonight I want to present the two thousand twenty-four Person County State of the County Health Report, or the SACH. But first, I want to give a little bit of background about what the SACH is. North Carolina requires that all local health departments conduct a comprehensive community assessment, health assessment. This is also known as the CHA. The CHA is done every three to four years, and it assesses the health of our county. The last CHA was done in two thousand twenty-two. The years between the CHAs, the State of the County Health Report, or the SACH, which is what this is, this report is done to assess the progress made in addressing the health priorities identified in the last CHA. You can also find and access this report via the Person County Health Department webpage, the SACH report. Morbidity and mortality changes since our last CHA. The Person County teen pregnancy rate for females ages fifteen through nineteen declined from twenty-five point eight to twenty-four point three. However, it is still above the state rate of twenty-one point eight, and this is per one thousand women. The prevalence of diagnosed obesity among adults twenty-plus years increased from twenty-two point three percent to twenty-four point six percent. The percentage of sexually transmitted infections, or STIs, decreased from ninety-two percent to eighty-seven percent. Chlamydia was the most prevalent, and it decreased from six hundred one to five hundred fifty-eight point six per capita, and this is barely under the state rate of six hundred sixteen. Gonorrhea followed with the rate increase from one hundred seventy-three to, one hundred seventy-three to two hundred forty-six, and this is per capita, and once again is barely under the rate of two forty-six point six for the state. Most significant changes to the mortality rate. COVID- nineteen moved from the number fifteenth leading cause of death to the fifth leading cause of death. Infant mortality rate was considered unstable due to less than twenty cases reported, and so therefore it was unreported for this report. Percentages of residents dispensed with opioid pills decreased from thirteen point four to twelve point two. However, there was a significant increase in the percentage of overdose deaths due to illicit opioids from sixty-three point six to seventy point six percent. And Person County's percentage of overall overdose deaths for illicit opioids is under. And Person County's percentage of overall overdose deaths for illicit opioids is under the state rate of 78.1%. Emerging issues since our last CHA. Animal rabies cases. There was one in 2024 and Person County experienced the increase in latent TB cases from 2020 to 2024. There were no cases in 2020 and in 2024 there were eight cases. New paused or discontinued initiatives since our last CHA. The new initiatives are 2024 Person County Health Department started providing urine, gonorrhea and chlamydia testing for both male and female clients. PCHD provided onsite flu clinics at most county schools for school personnel and their dependents. Piedmont Community College and PCHD have resumed providing a public health rotation for nursing students. NC Corporative Extension partnered with PCHD to pilot the Med South Lifestyle Program. Details are on the, in the progress notes on the chip section. Person County Schools collaborated with Person County Health Department to pilot the Catch My Breath Youth Vaping Prevention Program. Details of this is also in the report. And Person County Health Department entered into an agreement with Orange County Health Department to participate in the Thriving Hearts Initiative. And finally, a substance use education specialist, SUES, was onboarded through the Person County Schools. And this position was made possible by opioid settlement funding. And this ends the 2024 Person County State of the County Health Report. Any questions?
Any questions from the board?
I do have one in regards to the health department. With, and it's a little bit aside from the report, but we were talking about the community and just receiving concerns when we look at folk with trash and everything in their yards and people calling saying, you know, there are health hazards in regards to that and just thinking about the concerns that some of us have received with properties such as Brookwood and other rental properties in the county. And, you know, pretty much saying there's mold and other things going on in these housing communities. And I know you didn't really bring it up in this, but, you know, the concern was the health of the residents and the children living in those environments. So what is the health department's take on that?
Okay, so I'll defer this to the director.
Well, there are a couple of things. One depends on where they're located. The city does have a minimum housing ordinance, which the county does not. So we do work closely with the city officials. Our environmental health department of the health department, they do field a lot of these questions. So when we receive complaints or concerns about overgrown properties such as high grass, that kind of thing, our staff, we do go out and check the complaints out or household garbage or construction debris. And if it is an overgrown property or household garbage, then we try to educate the property owners. We do not have any laws or rules that we can use to enforce those. If it's construction debris or some other kind of hazardous materials on the stored on the property, then we do enlist our partners at the state with the Division of Solid Waste Management. If it is a sewer issue such as surfacing sewer from a private system, we do enlist our neighbors at the state, the Division of Water Resources, because we do not permit those systems. If it's onsite septic system at an individual property, then we are able to issue a notice of violation and work with those property owners to have those fixed. Roadside garbage, we again, it depends on what it is as to whether we can get involved. We do try to always provide resources, whether it is bats in a home or mold in a home. We always try to have resources available if they contact either the health department or environmental health, if it's out of our purview.
So you're more of a resource than an authority in that situation?
Yes, it depends on the laws and rules and some like the individual properties for septic systems that those laws and rules are delegated to the counties. Whereas the large sewer system or collection systems, those are part of the state laws and rules. And so we don't have any authority, but we do work with the state. So we try to always answer the questions or provide a resource for the individuals to further their inquiry.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, thank you so much for your presentation. Next, we have Child Futility Prevention Team Annual Report. Janet, you're back up.
I am. Well, the North Carolina general statutes require each county to have a child vitality prevention team, which reviews the records from the medical examiner's offices. Could be social services records, IR records, medical records, law enforcement records of each fatality. That is not a case of suspected abuse or neglect. And the fatality has to be at least a year old prior to our review. We do have a multidisciplinary team that reviews this, each death, and we meet quarterly at the health department. Some of the manners of death are classified as accidental, such as asphyxia, fire, firearms, motor vehicles or poisoning. Could be homicide, natural such as prematurity illness or SIDS, suicide, and it could be undetermined. In 2024, we did review 11 fatalities and this is calendar year. The year prior, we had two and the year prior, we had one. Causes included, included extreme immaturity, physical abnormalities at birth, one motor vehicle accident, homicide and a pedestrian injured, killed in collision with a car. We do try to educate the public using outreach at public events, billboards and social media campaigns. We do have one staff person that is a certified child passenger safety technician where she can inspect or install a car seat if someone needs that assistance. And we also through grant funds have car safety seats and safe sleeping options at the health department for those that may, may need assistance with those and cannot obtain those on their own. We, in July 1, which I think we met the end of November 1st of December with the commissioners, we, the Child Futility Prevention Team will transition to a joint Child Futility Prevention Team and Child Protection Team as of July 1. So there will be appointment of new or possibly reappointment of existing members at that time.
Any questions? Thank you so much. Next on the agenda is fiscal year 2026, 2030 Recommended Capital Improvement. County Manager and Tracy Clayton.
Good evening, Commissioners. It's my pleasure to present the Recommended Capital Improvement Plan for fiscal year 26 through 30. If IT will please pull up the slides, we'll go through those. Just to get us started, I will note that you have a bound copy in front of you at your seats. This plan was also included in the agenda packet. And I'll just walk you through what's in front of you. So you'll find a table of contents. You will have a letter that explains the purpose of the plan. Again, this is a five-year capital improvement plan that includes recommended funding for not only county government projects, but also Piedmont Community College and the Person County School System as the county is obligated to cover their capital needs for the provision of educational facilities. We also have two outside agencies for which the county owns buildings. That's the Person County Museum of History and the Person County Senior Center. We do not have any funding in this capital improvement plan related to those two facilities. So this particular plan, although it does include five years of funding, what you will be approving through the budget process is the first year of funding. So again, this is being presented to you tonight for your information and for discussion. We will come back to you at the next meeting on April 21st to ask you to approve this plan. Funding will not be authorized until you actually adopt the budget in June. And when you adopt that budget, you're authorizing funding for year one of this five-year plan. So the letter does provide some background information on what was funded in the current fiscal year. And it does refer to our request over the five-year period. And of course, the needs are great and funding is limited. There are a few projects that are not included and we will cover those. And there is one significant project, the Emergency Services Building, which has been identified as a need through a facilities assessment in the last couple of years. There is a significant expense associated with that, as you'll see laid out in this plan. And we do not currently have funding identified for that full project. We'll talk a little bit more about that. That's what you'll find that letter on pages one and two of the document. And then pages three talks a little bit more about the objectives, the steps in developing the plan. As far as how this is developed, departments are, county departments are asked to submit their CIP requests as well as the school system and the community college. So we went through a process of gathering those requests. We met with departments as well as the community college and school system as needed to talk through their project requests, to ask questions and to clarify information. Within your book on page five, let me start advancing the slides here because there are some references here. Completed projects, those are included on page five and I've just put a few examples on the slides here. But over the course of the past year or two, we've completed numerous roofing projects for county facilities and Person County schools. We have replaced field lights and poles on athletic fields, refurbished the water tank at the airport, demolished a water tower at the Old Halima School, replaced communication radios in all of the schools and installed cameras in all of the schools. And there are many other projects too. Those are just some of the examples. Some of the ongoing projects that are detailed in your booklet here would be roofing, which will be at the Development Services Building across the street that I believe is out to bid currently and will be completed this year. We have an emergency services radio upgrade project. We are in the midst of converting picnic shelters to cabins out at Mayo Park, installing outdoor multipurpose courts, doing ADA projects at the Kirby, accessible restrooms, accessible elevator. We've done work at PCC to fund chiller room upgrades, science lab renovations. And with the Person County Schools, we've done asbestos and lead abatement, replaced the water fountains. One of the noticeable projects has been the renovations at Person High School with the stadium restroom improvements, other improvements throughout the stadium and the high school that have been funded with our most recent debt issuance for the schools. So you will find in the booklet a listing of all of the recommended projects, pages eight through 12, which go year by year and provide a brief description of the projects. I will note that our current year, fiscal year 25 CIP totals $29.7 million. We shoot for funding the CIP with $3.2 million each year of general funded dollars. That was recommended by our debt consultants when we first put our financial model in place, would be to designate $3.2 million each year as pay-go funding. And then, so that makes a target of $16 million over a five-year period of general funding directed towards capital improvements. Our request for fiscal year 26 total $18 million. And over the five-year period, that totals $169 million. So you can compare that to the $16 million pay-go target and recognize that we need other funding sources to complement those general funded dollars. The fiscal year 26, I'm sorry, that's a typo on the slide, recommended CIP is $14.1 million. And the revenues that would go towards funding these projects include the general fund allocation, some, a small CIP fund balance allocation, proceeds from issuing limited obligation bonds likely in January, but in, in the fiscal year 26 time period to fund elementary school improvements with Person County Schools, some ARPA or American Rescue Plan Act funding that the county has set aside in reserve, community development project funds, that is funding that Republic Services gives us on an annual basis. They give $100,000 to the county due to our franchise agreement with the landfill to go towards projects and grant funding. And we'll talk about those in more detail. So we've covered this next slide already. So within the CIP, you will see that there are approximately $2.5 million of projects recommended for county government facilities. And those are listed here on the slide. And again, there's more detail provided within the CIP document for each of these projects. But there's the library HVAC system. There's an HVAC system upgrade and plumbing improvements at the law enforcement center with the sheriff's office. They are seeking body cameras. You will see, or funding for body cameras. You'll see the funding source is designated as a grant for that particular project. The GF on this slide indicates that it would be funded with that general fund allocation. Emergency services, these are climate controlled covers for the supervisor vehicles. Those are the ESI rapid response units. Ballistic protection, 62,000 for our medical personnel in the field. Again, seeking grant funding for that project. Bathroom renovations at the main emergency services station. Design and grant assistance for an emergency services building. So year one budget includes $430,000 for that part of the overall project to get us started and position us to be able to leverage a more detailed plan to pursue grant funding. Year two includes the projection of receiving a $6 million grant from the 911 board to go towards the communications center portion of an emergency services building. For recreation and parks, we've got playground accessibility updates and the amount of $65,000. We're hoping to be able to leverage that funding as a matching funding for a grant to expand that project. Athletic field lights, pickleball courts. Again, that, those were targeted to be funded through the Community Development Fund that I mentioned earlier. And then for the recycling center, the board has previously received a presentation on the mattress and tire shredder and indicated an interest in that particular project if we are able to secure grant funding for approximately half of that project. So our Person Industries Director is seeking out grant funding to support that project with the intent to leverage some of the ARPA or ARPA funding that has been reserved for future projects. Person County Schools, the major part of the, or driver of this total capital improvement plan is $10.2 million to fund improvements for accessibility, safety and security at five of the elementary schools, Stories Creek, South Elementary, Oak Lane, Helena and Earl Bradshaw Preschool. And these improvements would be funded through debt service. We have a plan in place to issue debt in the upcoming fiscal year and then again, two years later to fund these projects that the school system has long identified as very pressing needs that need to be addressed. So our debt model does accommodate this funding in terms of the debt service for issuing these limited obligation bonds. $300,000 in contingency for those projects would be funded through the general fund. And then there are two projects that are priorities for the school system in addition. So water source heat pump, Helena and Stories Creek, and then abate and replace floor tiles at Person High School. So moving on to Piedmont Community College's request. So moving on to Piedmont Community College's request. As you'll recall, we had a significant amount of our CIP dedicated to the community college last year with the purchase of the Carolina Pride Car Wash Building for their chat building. And this year, their funding would be in the amount of $736,000, which would cover information technology system updates, HVAC water pipe installation and door locking security upgrades. As far as projects that are not included, that were requested for fiscal year 26 funding but have been pushed out to later years, you'll see some projects associated with parks and recs. So HVAC installations at Helena and Olive Hill Gyms, gym painting, the splash pad that has come before you in previous years, and fence repair and replacement. So those are still on the plan, but they are not recommended for funding in fiscal year 26. For the schools, there are various projects, including heat pumps, intercoms, floor tiles, exterior door replacements, electronic door lock installations that have also been deferred to future fiscal years, as well as projects for Piedmont Community College, conference room renovations, flooring and finishes, parking lot repairs. And then chat renovations, they have requested $2 million per year over the next five years. And those are not included for funding. And we are partnering with Piedmont Community College wherever we can to support their ask when it comes to state or federal funding for renovations for that facility as well as grant applications that they have submitted or in the process of working on to fund those renovations. So you, again, you will see all of that information included in more detail in your booklet. As well as towards the back of the book, you will see more detailed information about revenue, the funding broken down by function, and as well as an analysis of the county's current debt and planned debt in future years. So the next steps in the CIP process would be adoption of the CIP on April 21st. And then just moving on through the budget process, we have May 19th, the county manager's recommended budget is presented. You will hold a public hearing on the recommended budget on June 2nd. We have potential budget work sessions to schedule the follow, in the days following the public hearing. And then adoption of the fiscal year 26 budget, which includes funding for the CIP on June 16th of 2025. That is my presentation. I will be glad to answer any questions you have.
Thank you.
Sure.
And members of the board, as you heard from the county manager, this is just receiving the information tonight. What I would recommend is a lot to digest, even though this was in our packet. And I have some, I have quite a few questions as well. What I would probably recommend would be a best practice is to schedule some time with the county manager and sit down and go over your own individual concerns, just as I plan on doing, and get some questions answered. Because it's going to take some time for them to come up with the answers that, that they're looking for. So that would be my recommendation. It gives you a full two weeks to schedule something with the administration and, and answer, get those questions addressed.
Yes, so I would encourage y'all to please, if you'd like to have a meeting, let's try to do that this week. So if we do need to rework some of the recommendation, that we can do that in advance of the next meeting and be able to include that in the agenda packet. Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you for your staff for putting together for us. Now it's an oval court.
That's right.
Thank you.
Okay.
All right. Next, we have chairman's report. Would like to say I attended the civics program that's put on by the county. I'm sure several of you have already attended or plan to attend a future session. Kim and the rest of the staff already commented. I was very impressed with the turnout. Looked like everyone was excited to be there. And I've only heard good things coming from it. So congratulations to the staff for successfully putting that on. Also, while I was there at the PI building, I did take a brief tour of the recently ongoing renovations. And it looks like everything is on the schedule as planned. And once everything is complete and we have a grand opening, I believe, maybe in sometime in September, we're looking around. I would encourage you to do so, but they're doing a great job over there at PI. All right, that's all I have to report. Mr. Vice Chairman. Oh, county manager.
I don't have a report tonight. It's okay.
All right. Well, back to you then.
No, no vote.
No vote. All right. Commissioner Wilber.
No vote.
Commissioner Royster.
Well, I had the privilege of joining the Board of Education today with our state superintendent, Mo Green. We toured Northern Middle School. And we had Senator Myers, Representative Jeffers, and a representative from Congressman Knox's office there in addition to other of our public Person County School System staff. And it was great. The kids were great. And it was, it was a good experience in just getting them to see the public officials in the school. It was kind of funny because they were walking around like, why are all these people here? But, you know, it was a good experience just to hear students talk about their needs in school as middle schoolers. But yeah, that was an exciting experience today, this afternoon.
Thank you for attending that. All right. At this time, do I have a motion to go into closed session per January Statute 143-318-111A3 for the purpose to consult with the county attorney in order to preserve the attorney-client privilege to discuss matters related to the lawsuit Person County v. Reeves, Person County v. Yarborough, pending opiate litigation and other legal matters with the following individuals. Permitter attend, county manager Catherine Cathy, clerk to the board Michelle Solomon, county attorney TC Morpheus Jr. and health director Janet Clayton. Do I have a motion?
A motion.
Or have a motion? Any further discussion? Haven't heard none. All in favor, vote for saying aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it, the motion's approved. We're now in closed session. And you oppose? The ayes have it. The motion is approved. We're now in closed session.
I make a motion to submit a letter of support on behalf of Person County for Duke Energy's application for certificate of convenience and public necessity, and to have the county participate as an intervenor with their application to the North Carolina Utilities Commission.
We have a motion. Any discussion? Haven't heard none. All in favor, vote for saying aye.